Friday to end the ball, former school committee member. Open tonight's school committee meeting for Monday, January eighth, twenty twenty four. The most of the bills. Some discussion. Minutes for November twenty nine, twenty twenty three, and December fourth. Discussion. Public comment. CTA. The floor is yours, Ron, but there's a lot of talk for them.
I don't have what?
Perfect.
And my problem has been on that slide. I looked at like that in the first class period. I think it's a one to two. Well, we had two. Okay, which actually was almost two and a half weeks. But the, um, the, uh, the topic of social innovation, I can't have a chance to kind of refrigerate this stress. Actually, yeah, that will rest here. So.
Those, those quick added after the short.
Well, I, I would say it's been a while since we actually got to. So I forgot, I don't know, like, just ask for, you know, maybe anything about everybody. How do you, uh?
That's not. I was trying to. It's not the issue. ETA.
How can we hear?
What's that?
Um, so the teachers, I've always had a lot going on. Um, we had this classical fair. We were able to close sales over fifteen hundred dollars. Um, this was between the week that we had running at the school as well as the night that we did for families that came in for conferences. Um, we actually did dinner out to that night. Um, and we get to consider.
Your name's state report.
Yes. They are amazing. They are a whole one's a killer. Um, but it's to be, and it's where we continue to be in South Bay. They're actively doing their companies to both the right businesses as well as to have a community of children. Um, and they're prolonged, given to us.
So gave us a gift card to raffle off. So in conjunction with two raffles we were already running, we ran a raffle and raffled that off. So we gave two raffles to teachers to give back to them for participating in the book fair. Um, and then one to families who checked in and signed up for our newsletter. We were able to sell fifteen tickets to the Lancaster Lights, which equaled thirty dollars to us just by sharing the information. We had a successful January meeting and welcomed the CMS project team and Dr. Myers for the PTA will be futurably working on our support going forward with the project, and that's in the works on our part, um, with the guidance from the builders. Um, the PTA is sponsoring two dances, as I said, this month. Um, one is on the twelfth, pre-K to fourth at various times. And then fifth and sixth, we moved to the twenty sixth because there was a conflict with CMS with the student council. But this actually opened the doorway and the discussion with the student council to encourage them and their teacher rep from the school to come to our meeting. And they actually requested funds to help with their dance. So we were able to award them some money to help get what they need. Um, so they were able to do that at our meeting last, this, early this month. Um, our next meeting's February first, and we will have more information to come as we have our second annual Family Bingo Night on March fifteenth, and we run the grade challenge the month before. And we're working on to figure out what the raffle prize will be for the grade winner.
Rebecca, February first, where and when?
Uh, it is the normal location, the Clinton Elementary School, um, at six fifteen in the cafeteria in the back, park where you're supposed to, not where you're not supposed to.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe some CPAC or OUTPAC? Dr. Meyer.
All right, so, uh, to get started, we have just a couple of staffing updates. Um, Joanie Lamb was hired as the school year secretary at CES. Um, part of that was in the shuffling with, um, uh, Ms. Swetland retiring at the high school. Uh, Julie, uh, Julie Natero, who was at the, um, middle school, ended up moving into that full year position. And then we refilled that position. We switched it to the elementary school based on the sort of what we see as the need. It's based on enrollment. Brittany Constant is, uh, rejoining us as a seventh and eighth grade science teacher. Um, she previously taught in the district. Um, she had left to take a, a different position and, um, decided that she wanted to come back, and we said, thank you. Uh, we had a transfer, Delmi Vigil is, was a ESL IA. She's now a family liaison, um, helping us with that department, which we're constantly trying to, um, uh, make sure is, is, uh, providing the support to our families. And we had one resignation, Jasmine Arazi was an IA at the middle school. She resigned, uh, right before the break. The next update was the calendar, which I know Ms. Quist brought up. Uh, typically, we don't take any action on the calendar right now. There aren't any half days on this calendar right now for professional development. We'll fill those in in another future draft. Uh, what we like to do is get this out there for comment, any comment from, uh, the school committee or from the unions or, or, uh, anyone to, you know, if there's any questions or concerns on the calendar. You know, I, I don't, I remember, uh, I do remember probably twenty years ago that there was a two-year break when I was a teacher, and I think they actually did a PD day on the Friday or something like that where we were just gonna come back. But I also remember, I don't think it was, um.
Well received.
Very productive. So, uh, I figured we might as well just, uh, just go ahead and say, let's take a break, uh, for that week. So, um, so that's how we proposed it in here. Um, like I said, we don't need to take any action on that unless anyone has any comments, but right now it's just to get this out as a draft for, for comment. Uh, the next thing I have is the middle, the CMS MSBA update. So since our last meeting, um, we, the building committee met, uh, we had, um, qualified three firms as potential, uh, construction management, uh, firms. The building committee, uh, her presentations from each of them, uh, voted and, uh, decided to move forward with Fontaine Brothers. Uh, so Fontaine Brothers would be the construction management, uh, firm. So they come on sort of at this step right now, uh, to try to help, uh, as we do the, um, as we work with the preferred schematic to just sort of look at getting those plans together. And as we get our cost estimating, they're able to kind of add some of the details as far as, you know, the, how the, the timing of the project might work, those types of things. Also add another set of eyes for value engineering type opportunities, um, which is another fancy word to say, where we can maybe save some money. So, uh, this is not their whole proposal. Their proposal's like a hundred and seventy-seven pages that we had to go through, and we had to score all of them. But this is, I tried to highlight, you know, some of the things in here. So you've got a couple of sections of, you know, the similar project experience that Fontaine has done, um, you know, South High School, Nelson Place, Auburn Middle School. Auburn Middle School is actually a project that they did with LPA. It was one of the ones that we, that our building committee toured or our, um, our sort of working group toured, uh, which there's gonna be probably a lot of similarities between that Auburn Middle School and, uh, the design we have, except it'll be kind of updated a little bit more. There's a quick overview of their staff. Uh, when they bid the job, when they, when they make their proposal here, they're telling us literally who's going to be on the job. So that's part of the selection is looking at, you know, who do you think really was a best fit? So it's not just, they're not just giving us, you know, names of people in the company. These are the names of the people who are supposed to be on our, on our job. And to talk about some of the stuff they're gonna try to do with, uh, you know, pre-construction stuff, uh, what are some of the goals in toward, in, in, including avoiding impacts on the current campus, making sure everything's safe. They've done a lot of, you know, one of the things in all the firm, one thing I should say is that, um, we had ten construction management firms that, that put in for qualifications, uh, submitted qualifications in this process. From those ten, we were able to narrow it down to three, the top three. I think we actually did the top four, and one of them ended up pulling out. And then, um, and then we did this. And, and obviously it's, I haven't, I don't go through this a lot, but talking to the OPM and the designer, they said that this was really a, uh, competitive. You know, there was a lot, a lot of interest and a lot of good presentations, and you could tell that a lot of people put a lot of effort into this, uh, which, and I, and I asked, I said, is that normal? And they said, um, you know, not, not normal that you see this many firms that's interested in really putting this much effort into the, just the proposal. So, you know, there's just other things in here, just for your, uh, you know, basically for your information. When you get towards the end of this, um, it gets to like the site logistics and phasing plan, and towards the end, you can see they have some of the drawings there, like the first day of school, twenty twenty-five, what would it look like? And then, uh, construction during twenty twenty-five, and you can see, you know, different things that I didn't even think of. Like, I just kind of in my head assumed like, oh, if they need to park construction vehicles, they'll probably just park, you know, if people show up for work, they'll probably just park across the street. And they're like, well, it's too disruptive. We're gonna build a temporary onsite parking within the, within the ground so that we're not, you know, disrupting everybody. So there's a lot of that kind of stuff that, you know, I, I didn't, you know, obviously they do this for the living. They, that's how they, they thought it through. You know, and then just to kind of walk you through somewhere at twenty twenty-seven, uh, first day of school, twenty twenty-seven, it'll probably be, you know, the goal is by, if, if everything goes well, if it gets approved in June, then by the first day of school, twenty twenty-seven, we would be in that building. What would be, there would still be some site work left, um, but the building at that point would be, uh, the one we were occupying. And so that's, you know, I just kind of wanted to give a little overview of that. A lot of work went into that from the, um, the permanent building committee in particular and the, and the CMS building committee. I don't know if anyone has any, any questions on, on that.
We got our next meeting tomorrow.
Next meeting of the building committee is tomorrow. Yep, that'll be the first one that Fontaine Brothers will be officially there at. I will say though, Fontaine Brothers jumped right in, and they had two representatives come to the, uh, PTA meeting. So, uh, when we went there, and I know, uh, I know Tina was there, Mr. Connolly was there, and, uh, uh, so it was a good, it was a good showing. And I, and I did do a couple of meetings, um, before break at the, uh, senior center. Not overly well attended, but at least one, the second one, I know that Ms. Quitzel did at least, uh, like kind of livestream it, and, uh, she could see that she had a handful of people that started watching it that way. So just trying to get the word out. I mean, I think at this point, the biggest thing is, um, if people have questions, just to kind of let us know, because I, I will, I, you know, I can't advocate one way or the other. We gotta just get the information out there and let the, so that the voters can, can make their decision. But what I don't want to have happen is I don't want anyone to make a decision that they don't feel informed about. So if there's, if they have a question, I want to make sure that we can get that information to them so that, so that they're willing to, that they're, you know, prepared and understand everything when we go in there. So, all right. Uh, the next one is circuit breaker audit. So if you met, if you remember, we did have a circuit breaker audit in the fall. Um, it did go well. This was our final letter from the audit. Uh, we did get a reduction of thirty-one thousand eight hundred and eight dollars of a claim that was, you know, in excess of a million dollars, right? So, um, in the grand scheme of things, I, that's, I'm okay with that. I'd rather us overclaim a little than, than, than underclaim, right? And the main ones, one of the main ones was, uh, transportation. Transportation is new to circuit breaker. Transportation costs didn't use to count in circuit breaker, so there was a couple, uh, mistakes or, or lack of documentation or whatever exactly it was, they went over with it, um, that we need to just kind of tighten up in moving forward. Um, but that's, you know, that's okay. It's, it's kind of a new thing. But overall, overall was very positive, uh, review.
Steven, is there no adverse impact for you in regard to that number?
No, we'll be fine. Cause we're, excuse me, we always try to budget our circuit breaker one year, uh, behind. Excuse me. So the circuit breaker reimbursement we get this year is what we budget for next year. So our claim will be about thirty thousand dollars less this year. That means when we budget for next year, we just know that that's the number. But like I said, thirty thousand on a million is, uh, not that bad. The, uh, so the next couple up here, I'm probably gonna invite, uh, Principal Sirmak to come up a little bit in case you have any questions. But we have, um, a couple of things on here about high school midterms and the program of studies. We'll probably have you do that, too. But we'll start with midterm exams.
Okay. So I'll let you, uh, scour over that really quick and.
Good, so what, what you guys decided that basically beginning this year, we're going to eliminate mid-year exams, we are gonna keep final exams?
Right, so what we looked at was, um, with the leadership team, we talked about midterms over the years, and we talked to the other principals and the midwatch principals, um, group. And more and more people are looking at exams like, why are we doing this? We're not using, or are we using this data and what are we using the data for? And we determined that because we do start testing four times a year, in the beginning of the year, in November, December, in February, March, and then in May, for all students in ELA and math, that we have the data we, we want to have for ELA and math. And we can look at that data and make decisions on what students are doing, what they need. Students are also taking interim exams at the end of every quarter, not exams, assessments in each course. We used to call them DDMs, District Determined Measures, but really they're content-based quarterly exams, just where are the students at with the content at this point? So looking at all that, we talked about like, what is the point of having a midterm? It's just one more assessment, we're gonna put on the kids to gather the same data that we're already gathering. So that's why we decided to cut them out. Now that gives us four more solid days of teaching, one less disruption to the schedule. If you remember in the past, we were doing early, early, uh, our.
Late arrivals.
Yeah, modified the schedule, the entire school shuts down. Now we can continue with teaching, go through our curriculum, and I feel like we want, um, get more done with the kids than.
And I think it's from an accountability standpoint, you still kept the final exams in place. So it is sort of like, you know, the midterm was kind of that halfway point where it's kind of arbitrary, you know? Maybe, maybe I didn't do well in the midterm because I didn't quite get a concept, and then two days later, if I get it, but now I'm punished because I didn't do well in that midterm. But I think that now it's sort of, you know, you have until the end of that, end of that class, basically. When you're, when you're done in that class with that teacher, there's still that accountability of a final exam to say, how did you do? So I think it's a good, it's a good mix.
Like Dr. Meyer was saying, with the half-year courses also, if you have a half-year course at the beginning of the year, you still take a final exam in January. You'll just take it during, or you have double periods before the end of the quarter. So we don't stop the entire school, we just, so you can have your final exam. And at the end of the year, we'll do the same thing, all courses, the second semester courses and full year courses, we'll take a final exam. I think I put on there, do you have the percentages?
Yep.
Okay. And that was another reason, too, is one test means so much. It's a lot.
All right.
The second part was, um.
Program of studies.
Program of studies. So in the program of studies, um, what we decided to do this year, what decided to, what we looked at was just cleaning up our program of studies. There were a lot of courses in here that were in here when I was teaching. It was actually an A-plus course in there from two thousand and one when I taught computers. And that course has come and gone. So what we tried to do is take a lot of courses out, uh, that weren't running or haven't run in many, many years. And then, um, for a lot of these, they're just new write-ups. For instance, um, the second one, add EL, MCAS, ELA, math, physics, and biology. We've always run those, they're just an MCAS prep course, but we put the write-ups into the program of studies so we know what they are, so the kids can read about them, know what they are. There's new courses in here, such as the first one, freshman and sophomore experience. That's a course that all freshmen and all sophomores will take. And it's a, uh, if you want me to explain it, I can. Depends on how much time you want me to sit up here. It's, uh, it's really a, a different, a different type of course. I worked with Dr. Meyer on it, and it's a course where, if we talk about tier one, tier two, and tier three, um, for students, interventions, this would be a tier-two intervention for all students, where students are grouped homogeneously, and they all went to pick, take a year-long, a year of course, and the course is broken up into six different segments. And freshman year is broken up to math, two ELAs, a science, two wellnesses, and missing one?
What'd you say, science, math, two ELAs, and two wellnesses, right?
Six of them.
Yeah.
And the students will move through in thirty-day segments. They'll do math for sixty, I'm sorry, ELA for sixty, wellness will have two thirty, third-day segments, and then, um, the science, because we have science, MCAS freshman year, so they'll have the science, physics, kind of MCAS prep, and then, um, the math will be the same type of thing. But it's tier-two because if the students are grouped homogeneously, this group of kids should be on the same page, if you will, with their math skills, science skills, et cetera, so the teacher can teach to those kids and help those kids on what they need to bring them up.
So it'll be, yeah, it'll be in addition to, yeah, obviously a regular English class, a regular math class, and what would allow us to do is sort of, um, look at the data, like the STAR data or the MCAS data, so that we can try to fill in those gaps that certain students might have. It don't have to be tracked necessarily the same group the whole year. There are other opportunities like wellness or something like that where we can say, hey, we're gonna kind of mix that one up a little bit, but like when you go to math, we might group you a little more purposefully because we really know that, you know, these group of students are really need help with, uh, number sense, and that's what we're really gonna focus on in this group. So it's a way of kind of building in some of those interventions to, to, uh, basically fill in those gaps based on the data or offer enrichment opportunities based on the data.
Absolutely. And then the same thing with sophomore year, instead of having two Englishes, we'll have two maths, and then.
Instead of science, they'll have.
History.
History to work on their civic project.
Civic project. Right, so, you know, like I said, Dr. Meyer and I have been talking about this a lot, working together a lot.
Well, based upon the last tri-council meeting, I think you guys had highlighted some gaps that you wanted to attack, so this makes a ton of sense.
Absolutely.
For mediation against what you've already identified, so.
For everyone.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think we can all do a little bit better with kids, too. So, um, and I do have a whole write-up of that, if you, if you're bored and you want some reading.
Well, they have the whole, they have the.
Oh, they have all, thank you.
Yeah.
I think I have some extra write-ups. It's one of those.
And all these, just before you get into all the, all, all those courses and the electives, we did review with the, um, curriculum committee. Um, so we, we walked through all those and, and, um, you know, some of the electives that we added, those types of things, so.
I'm just gonna, I'll go right through these. If you have a question, just stop me. Um, I'm not gonna give you all the details, but I'm just gonna go through them. The new drama course, um, this is in honors and CP, that'll be taught in the same room, and then there's different ways of doing that. It'll be about, anyway, new course. A new description, so the ESL four is a course we run, and, um, we just put new description in the program of studies. Banking and finance two, we just updated that description. Banking three, that is through LCU, and what we'll do is, it'll be a limited number of students that are able to take that course, but they'll, they'll have the opportunity to do an internship at LCU Bank. So it's one of those where, this is the advanced kids who we can hopefully give something to the third in, um, the three banking courses. Personal finance, a new business course about personal finance. You can track your money, credit cards, if needed. Right, you think? Yeah, so. Film and literature, new course, again, honors and CP, can be brought in the same room. Vocal music, we just changed the name from, um, electronic music to music techno, uh,
Music Technology.
To make music technology, and then vocal music, not the music, we just updated. We added piano one and guitar one. We do have, um, a number of keyboards upstairs and a number of guitars. Depending on how many students sign up, um, we budget for more guitars, more keyboards, but wait and see on who signs up. And, and with all the electives, it all depends on, it's student-driven, who and how many have signed up for the course. If two kids sign up for the course, maybe we don't run it. If thirty-four of them, maybe we run two sections, whatever, whatever it's student-driven there. We added a new first aid CPR and AED course. Um, students will walk out of there with a first aid CPR certificate, current.
That's an elective, Scott.
That's an elective, yeah. French three, we just put the new description in there, and then, um, we add a faith description.
Scott, did you guys, um, sort of identify, the ones that you identified as new, was, was that based upon what you were hearing about demand from kids? Or, you know what I'm saying, like, how did you arrive at saying, we should offer these because, you know, kids are often asking if they could take a course like this? So do you already have an, like, and understand there's probably some demand for these courses? Or is it, is it driven somewhere else, from somewhere else?
All different areas. It starts with, um, teachers coming to department chairs, department chairs coming together, we call it our leadership team. We come together, we discuss it, and then we look at, um, teachers that want to teach those courses. Usually if we have a new teacher come to our system after a year or two, they say, hey, in my old system, I taught this, or we have this. And we kind of look at that and see, where do we have electives, where do we need electives, what are people looking for? Guidance is always asking for more electives, but that is also driven by the number of staff we have. You can't just add courses, you know? So, and as I explained to, um, the staff members here, if you have a hundred kids, there's gonna be four classes of twenty-five. Where those four twenty-five are, depends on where they sign up. So if there's nobody in this one, this one isn't gonna run, but this one will run. Still the same number of kids going somewhere.
Right.
But I think what'd be nice is the, uh, you know, the banking three, starting that idea of getting those internships.
Right.
Personal finance, I heard you kind of say, I think that's a huge one that I think we need to focus on. And then, uh, a thing we like about the first aid CPR and AED is, is you're getting kids sort of a credential that, maybe that helps them get a job as a official or something or whatever, they could use, but like, with those types of things. So I think keeping an eye towards that with some of these electives, too, of really what, what is, like, to your point, what's the demand or what's the need that we're trying to meet? Yeah.
Yes, I did the LCU internship with a senior project class and loved it. So the fact that we're introducing it as an opportunity, just as a pathway is awesome.
As a third, as a third course in the group of banking, um, students will be working in, those students that are in banking through would actually work at our LCU here with the teacher.
That's all.
That's why it's a limited number, all the newer. Any other questions on the program of studies?
Could you just walk, so if I'm coming in as a freshman?
Yeah.
I'm just walking through the day of a freshman, like, I know the periods and all that has changed, but, like, with this new.
Freshman experience.
Freshman experience, which is, which is great. Give it, I, I like the idea of giving the kids the help they need at their level.
Sure.
And being able to group them together, although I applaud the scheduling genius who makes this all happen, but. So as a freshman, you're taking English, math, science, a social study.
History.
Okay. And then, uh, health and wellness is just one semester each, so that's.
So now, so now those are rolled into the freshman experience?
Right. Oh, the, oh, that's rolled in.
Freshmen and sophomore year, you'll get two, two, um, sections each, two thirty-day segments, um, each year.
And then they used to have the English.
Freshman seminar.
Freshman seminar for English, that's kind of rolled into the freshman experience as well.
Oh, okay.
So if you're looking for where does that time come from, it kind of comes from there. It just gives us a better way to, by aligning it as one unified period as opposed to kind of having it as, where did it fit in your schedule? It gives us a little bit better ability to flexibly group kids to meet their needs.
Let me go a little bit further with that. I said earlier, there were two Englishes freshman year and one sophomore year for that, those thirty-day segments.
Just with thirty.
So that'll be thirty, thirty-nine, which would be the same amount of time they have freshman seminar now. So they're just gonna get in different blocks.
Okay, okay.
We were gonna add a math seminar, so you'd have, um, freshman seminar and math seminar. Instead of just adding a math seminar, we have, in the freshman sophomore experience, you have freshman year, one thirty-day block, and then sophomore year, two thirty-day blocks to give you the total of ninety days. So they're getting a math and a freshman seminar in both of those. So by, it, it's funny, by adding more, we actually have more time with the kids to do other things. So they really didn't lose anything, if anything, they gained more sections or little courses. Anything else on the program of studies?
One thing sort of tangent to the program of studies is the, and I know it's on your list, but I didn't explicitly put it on the agenda, but it's sort of related, is the, uh, dual school program. Still gonna continue to run the dual school program the way it's been done. Still going to continue to run the dual school program the way it's been done. I think I might have mentioned this at an earlier meeting as well, but just to reiterate, because we were talking about it and couldn't really find it, is that one of the things we looked at was the criteria for the dual school program. So I think before, I think pre-COVID, there was a lot more concrete criteria for dual school about sort of how you, you know, your academic performance in middle school, your MCAS performance in middle school. I think sort of coming out of COVID, we were just sort of trying to engage the kids, and the numbers got a little bit bigger, and what we tried to do now is look, and we're trying to make it so that we go back to sort of looking at your performance on either your seventh or eighth grade MCAS, basically saying, you know, if you're not meeting, if you're really not meeting middle school or grade-level expectations, should you really be taking a high school course? But if you're at that, you know, exceeding expectations level, then it makes sense for you to come and take a high school course. So just trying to, to kind of look at that as another, just a way of making sure that we're placing students appropriately and making sure that those, we get the right kids in the right courses.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, but I would be hesitant to, I would be hesitant to connect it all to MCAS, because I think kids, kids can be very bright and have great opportunities, but they don't test well.
Yeah.
I being one of those kids when I was in school years ago. So, so I just think, you know, as long as there's a rubric that allows for balance, so they can, you know, prove through some sort of modality or commitment that they want to be in that program and they have what it takes to do it, I think it's a great idea. I don't think everybody should just be like this big casted net that they just come in, but I think if we start honing in on MCAS as being like, sort of the, I don't know, the stand that we're going to take as being the focal point, like, I don't, I think that's a mistake.
Yeah.
So I just think, I just say, be mindful as you have those discussions.
So it might be a good starting point, as long as there's maybe an alternative.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
That's right. I mean, there's certain responsibilities you have to have through MCAS as you go through these grades and you're taking the tests anyway, but I just would hate to see kids not be included because of that being the main component.
Yeah. But I think one of the things we looked at this year was, I think we had, we have over 30 kids or something like that in one, yeah.
There's 20, 21, I think.
Yeah, or whatever, it was, it was in the twenties or something. But you're looking and you're going, you have, you know, 15% of the class is coming over to take high school. I mean, it's a little bit, that's a, you know.
Yeah, it's a lot.
So I think we just wanted to try to start, start looking and make sure we're capturing that to the appropriate, appropriate audience.
Absolutely.
The last one was, the student council ran a Pink Apparel fundraiser, and they partnered with Pink Revolution of New Hampshire for the second straight year. And Pink Revolution aims to, to help patients undergoing treatments for all types of cancer. I have a write-up here, I can read the whole thing, or I can just tell you about it. Now, what they did is, their goal was to raise $1,000, and then they were going to raise $1,000, and then donate 60% of the Pink Revolution. They surpassed that rate, they raised $1,408. So they are going to, they want to donate $845, and then the rest, the remaining, will go into the student, student activity fund for school council, so they can fund their, the piece and everything else they buy for the games, stuff like that. I just wanted you to know that.
Yeah, that's one of those things that we have to, we have to inform you about if they're making a donation, just so, that was one of the things that's arrived, you know, you learn something every audit, and that was one of them. So we're informing you of that donation by the student council.
Does anybody have any questions for me?
No, I just, I want to applaud the vocal and the instrumentals, and I just, the recent drama production of Legally Blonde Jr. was wonderful. I think it was, it was great to see the attendance and just the amount of children participating. And I'm hoping to see that whole, that whole process continue through the high school year, so that the high school drama stays as robust as what I saw, you know, as the attendance stands.
Absolutely, absolutely. Do your job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You guys should have a letter, I think, that was, was there one slipped in your packet? Yeah. So this one was actually, we got this, we just got it at my office today, kind of replaces what we had put in your packet, but it's just in, another one of those things, just informing you that we did apply for a grant. I think it was Mr. McGuire, and we were awarded $3,000 from the Straight Treasurers Financial Education Innovation Fund to run the Credit for Life Fair. So we've been running that for the last couple of years. This is just letting you know that we did, we do plan on running that again, and we were awarded the grant to, to support it. Let's see, integrated monitoring, so the state likes to always look at stuff. So what they used to call tiered focus monitoring, if you remember, we just kind of finished a round of tiered focus monitoring, is now going to be called integrated monitoring. So we, we're going to have to be working on that. We're going to get to use their new communication hub and monitoring portal, which they've now abbreviated CHAMP. But those, so anyway, we're going to have to go through and do this again. We're, we're going to, they'll go over the, all the indicators and what we're going to need to submit at an upcoming webinar, but we just did get notified of this, that we, we have to participate in that so that we can get that ready coming forward. So I'll get you more information as we get notification of that, but that's the compliance arm of the DESE helping us out there. Same idea, SOA plans, SOA Student Opportunity Act, so we are in, next year would be the fourth year of the Student Opportunity Act, so we would have FY '25, FY '26, and FY '27 should be the last three years of it. So when you originally did, when SOA funds were originally, came out, if you remember, we had to do a SOA plan for three years, and now they want us to do a second three-year SOA plan. You know, I don't think there's going to be a lot of, I have actually the webinar and what they're looking for for this tomorrow, so we'll kind of get their template and we'll figure out exactly what they're, what they're looking for. I know for us, you know, the SOA increase this year is primarily going to be used to offset the, to kind of transition the positions that were under ESAR, so that we don't have, remember, we were talking about funding cliffs and all that kind of stuff. So it should allow us to hopefully maintain services, even though that the, the ESAR funding from COVID is, is, will be gone for next fiscal year. So, so that's, that's where we are, but I'll, I'll get you more information on that once we have it, which I'll get the, the states, we'll see how, how, how much detail they want in that. There's a lot of sort of controversy around those SOA plans as well, because it's technically Chapter 70 money, which, you know, other districts, you can look at it and say, well, we're getting this money because we were underfunded. Well, technically, there's other districts that maybe were overfunded. They don't have to tell you how they're spending their money. You know, it's, well, you know, once you get to Chapter 70, it's Chapter 70. But, you know, it's, it wasn't a big, it wasn't too much of a hassle last time, you had to submit something and they were okay, so hopefully we'll be all right. But we'll keep you, we'll keep you informed of that. And then the last thing is just a tri-council agenda, reminder that next meeting on the 22nd is a tri-council meeting. So we'll go 5:30 in the cafeteria, we do a quick meal, and then we, we'll go in at 6 o'clock, we'll get started, and we'll do sort of the presentation for the councils. Those are kind of the topics that we're going to hit on, sort of a mid-year goals update, the draft of the revised strategic plan and mission, where we stand on that. I'm going to give a quick student opportunity plan update, basically just letting you guys know what I learned in my webinar, and then we'll go over the preliminary FY '25 budget. So those are the, the goals for that meeting. Hopefully, we can fit those all in there. And I believe that's the end of my report.
Thanks, Steve. So thanks, Kell, for putting this together in the back. The subcommittee assignments are on the back. It should be the last page in there. All we did was fill it, I think she was reading.
You're putting me to work right away?
Yeah. And there's no stipend either. So just put Joel's.
Yeah.
So we're good there.
Yeah, all we did was we just put-
Where Joel was.
Where Joel was, yeah. So I mean, if you guys wanted to make any changes, obviously, you could just, you know, make, make changes, but you don't have to, you guys can talk about it if there's any concerns, and we can let me know, and we can approve it next meeting, or whatever you want to do.
None of the committees met, right? None of the subcommittees, I'm not on either of those. The holidays, good on negotiations. None of their whole business.
I was just wondering if there was any update on the concern with the change of insurance?
I haven't had any update yet. What I know is, I believe they're trying to get a meeting together this month. I do know that the town, so I'd say in the fall, the town had hired a consultant to begin looking at the insurance rates out of a concern about what the rates might be from the Minuteman de Chauva Health Group. I guess a lot of towns had started doing that, and the Minuteman de Chauva Health Group looked like it was going to have another bunch of rate increases, so most towns pulled out of it. And then they voted, I think in December, that now they're actually going to dissolve the Minuteman de Chauva Health Group. So we need to find another alternative. The consultant was already working on it, looking at things like, you know, what's it look like if we go just to Blue Cross, or with this group, or MIA, I always say it backwards, it's not the Athletic Institution, it's the, you know, or, or even like GIC. And I think GIC, I think we missed the deadline for this year, the deadline for, for GIC, I think, is December 1st. We could always get it next year, but GIC just approved their rate hike, and it was like 10% or something like that. So, so we'll see what the consultant comes back with. I know that Mr. Ward sent out an email to a lot of the department chairs right before, I think to the unions, too, right before Christmas break, that we are going to try to get that insurance commission together, whatever it's called, hopefully this month, and get an update from the consultant, whether he has final numbers or not, but at least figure out like what, what are we looking at for options.
You guys just, one thing, and I don't, if the committee, if you want to put this on an agenda, but I'd like to meet with the, the traffic committee from the town about the parking in front of elementary school. So I don't know if it's something, I know you're on the safety committee, I don't know if it's something we handle there, I don't know if it's something you need to put on the agenda for the next school committee meeting, but in the meantime, I could get with Matt Colvis, the chairman of the selectmen, to find out when, I just found out today that they don't meet on a regular basis, so we kind of coordinate the both when, and again, if it's something we want to put on the agenda, then we can discuss it the next meeting, and then give you something to go forward. If you guys don't want me to do it, that's fine, too, but-
No, and we'll probably do for another safety committee meeting to kind of figure out what our next round's going to be. So when we kind of get that scheduled, maybe that's an agenda for that group, too, just to talk about it, come up with some ideas from that group. And then we can try to-
I'll find out when they meet, too.
Yeah.
And Brittany, you're just, I imagine you're talking about the concern about how people park up at the curb in front of the elementary school, which leaves very little room for moving either way.
Well, if you look now, I talked to a couple of departments.
Because I'm not down there often, so.
Both sides of the road, you've got cars parked all day long. So now you've got the winter in there, you know, there's very little room for two cars to come up there, never mind throw in a sander truck or-
Sure.
And I don't know how you guys work that drop-off and pickup, it looks like it organized. It's like your cats. Hell, they do a great job, but there's only, this is only-
So much room.
It's a good design other than for picking up and drop off.